Okay, good evening. It's six o'clock. I'm gonna bring this Board of Selectmen meeting of July, yeah, July, jumping ahead. June 23rd. And we're going to start out with Greg from YCN. I take it you're Greg? And so the floor is yours. Welcome. Coming right behind you.
I'm here simply to have asked you to consider allowing a group of that we've put together to use the access channel here in New London. Just a quick little background. My partner and I, John O'Connor, had built three TV stations and we were running them out of Claremont and we found that that it wasn't financially viable. And so we sold the stations to WCAX up in Burlington. And but the reason that I partnered with John in the first place was because for 40 years I've been producing local programming throughout the state, starting in Concord and then probably more recently in the New London area. And it slowly expanded into the Kearsarge basically school district. And and that's what attracted John to me and me to John. Because he wanted to create an entity that would sustain local programming. That being said, we sold the stations. My wife and I, who live in Newbury, bought the the intellectual property and physical assets that were left over from the sales and have continued to produce local programming, Yankee Chronicle, Game of the Week. And and probably most recently here in New London, we we provided a live stream for the workforce housing panel. So that's the kind of stuff that we do. And I'm 71 years old. I'll probably do this as long as I can, but you know, there are limits to how long that can sustain itself. So John and I had originally talked about the possibility of setting up a nonprofit organization that would pretty much do what it is that I'm doing. And in the process, I found that it was fairly cumbersome, you know, to set up a board of directors to do, to do, you know. But one of the things that I stumbled across, I had met with the executive director of the Newport Access Operation to with the possibility of them running Yankee Chronicle. And in the course of that conversation, he said, well, we have an extra channel. You know, do what do you think about creating kind of this super channel for the area? Again, a sidebar to that is, as the Concord Monitor's advertising revenues have dropped off, the Valley News revenues have dropped off, they've scaled back their coverage. And so unless something very dramatic happens in this donut hole of the Lake Sunapee region, we we're not going to get the coverage anymore that we had had in the past. And that coupled with the fact that there was already this facility in place. And we had some programming. They have some programming. The idea was precipitated to, you know, create this kind of regional cable channel. It, there are two aspects to it. One is that we need the local communities to clear the cable channel, which is allocated in your franchise agreement for our use. And and that's why I'm here tonight to ask you to explore that possibility. We have all the towns except New London and Sunapee on board from Newport all the way down to Hopkinton. And part of the network is already in place in that to sidestep the the legal process of going to each community. I've struck a deal with TDS Telecom and and they've been very gracious in that they're setting up a leased access use of a channel, which was the channel that we were on when we were producing the TV programming out of Claremont. It was a must carry. They had to carry us. And they liked the idea of local programming being on. And they're going to charge us a dollar a year. But not really. It's a formality that we're going through and signing this this lease agreement with them. The other side is Comcast, which there I just having dealt with them in terms of our must carry requirements and things like that, maybe in a public forum, I shouldn't say that. You know, it's quite cumbersome to deal with them. You know, even even when we had must carry that they had to acknowledge, they made it as difficult on us as possible. And had I not had a partner that was just as how did he describe himself as a bull in a china shop? I mean, whenever, whenever he was challenged, he says, we'll beat these guys. In the end, we did. We got our carriage. But we need to go through the formality of having you ask them to allocate that channel for our use. Very simply, we will operate under the rules that are provided for by Newport. And I can provide them to you, but they're, you know, they're pretty traditional local access rules. We're running our even to this point now, the operation as a nonprofit using a PBS style funding source with billboards, underwriting, maybe even someday an auction, an on air auction or something. But it, the costs are minimal. And we're not here to ask for money. We're just asked for that 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 channel position. Now, in some of my pitches to some of the communities, it was asked, well, what if we don't like what you have on? And and that's my, my answer to that is we are, we're operating under the same rules that Newport does. And they're, they're, they try to, you know, allocate equal time for everybody. Anytime an issue comes up, they're non political, they're and and so I think that that aspect of it isn't a shouldn't be of concern. The other one is, well, what if we decide someday we want to use that channel? It's your prerogative. If you feel at some point that you can provide a better service than what's there, you own the channel. And and you can rescind our use of it. I mean, we hope we, as a good citizen, a TV citizen, you know, we do good things that you don't want to get rid of. But you know, the proof will be in the pudding in terms of what we're doing. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have any questions? Go ahead. Speak up.
So what if you and John decide that you don't want to do it anymore? Who will step in?
Well, John has already stepped aside, other than some financial backing to get the thing up and running and cover some of the technical costs, which is when we closed down the other company, he he agreed to do. The idea, as I said, I'm 71 years old. And the reason that the Newport situation was so appealing to me was we're the, the idea is to hand it off to them. I mean, initially, you know, albeit doing the Yankee YCN programming. But it'll be integrated with other things, you know, you, you may even see their selectmen's meeting on there, on that channel, which they do produce. You'll see local high school sports, which they already produce and we produce our Kearsarge version of those things. So it the idea, you know, and the great concepts is that, you know, within three or four years, it would fully fall into their operation. I've already signed an agreement with them. They're handling all the finances. We're under, we're operating under their nonprofit status. And and again, the idea is that my plan is to, in the next two or three years, create enough of a book of business for the the nonprofit that we can hand it off to somebody that could probably make a living or as a part time jobs, not really selling advertising, but selling the underwriting and and the other devices. So that's, that's the idea is that we would have that set up. One of the things that we have talked about, and when I met with the selectman in Hopkinton, was the idea of setting up an advisory board that would be made up by somebody appointed by you or from each community to represent the communities and help, help guide the direction of the operation and where the programming would go.
And how would you guarantee that each town would have equal access would be covered equally? How is that going to be? I've seen the Newport selectmen's meetings. So and and some of the basketball, but I just wonder, will you make sure that New London and Hopkinton were given quality time to
Well, I think
community events?
I think, I think what you have to understand is that what they do for Newport is provided for through the the budget in that town. And that's what sustains that programming. To me, what we're creating is a blank slate for the towns to decide, you know, as they move into the future. And as, you know, what we hope is that, you know, when they see the workforce panel thing that another town who has, you know, will say, gee, you know, we're, we're having a similar meeting where you cover it. And you know, there, our, our rule of thumb isn't to charge for the time or anything. It's just that we want a certain professional quality of what we're doing. So, you know, and it, we're not Channel Nine. I mean, we never have been. We don't purport to be. But to have somebody who knows which end of the camera to look through and knows how to focus and white balance and get decent audio. I mean, those are the criteria. And so if a town decides that you know, they want to do that, then, you know, we can work with them in developing that. I mean, the Kearsarge school district already, I mean, we've been doing their deliberative session every year for the last 20 years. And it's something that they allocate, you know, I think $500 or $1,000 a year to do the that one event, you know, so there are formulas already in place. When a community wants something done, what we're trying to do in my, my initial posture is simply, how do we sustain what's already there? The Yankee Chronicle, the Game of the Week, the the League of Women Voters forums that we've been televising for for several years now. So those are, I, so it'd be what it becomes is the initiative has to come from the community itself and what they feel they need. You know, the the Hopkinton selectmen said, you know, we don't need you to do our, our meetings because they're, they're on the web, you know, people can watch them. The other side benefit that I didn't mention earlier of all of this is we're putting the technology in place. So not only will people be able to see it on cable, TDS and Comcast, but anybody who has broadband will be able to watch it on our website. Any of the programs on our website also. So it's, we've tried to come up with a universal access as much as possible.
Thank you.
Yep.
So can I just clarify and then last Bill? So tonight, you're asking for the use of our cable franchise that provides local access channel?
Yep.
And so we would have a franchise agreement with YCN?
No, you're
Who is the entity?
You already have an agreement with Comcast. All you're doing is say approaching, you need to legally approach Comcast and say, we would like NCTV to provide the programming for our channel.
I see.
And every town is basically going that, that we've, we've talked to, except for the TDS exclusive towns, Warner, Sutton, Bradford and oh, Newbury. They, because we already had that in place and they have approved this lease access agreement, we don't even have to go through this formality in those communities.
Yep. Thank you. I was trying to figure out who the they was and it was getting a little confusing. Bill?
So just to follow that a little bit more. So what happens to our TDS coverage? As you've mentioned, get the Comcast franchise, Comcast, what about our TDS?
Well, that was the, the leased access agreement we have with TDS. We'll continue to, they'll continue to carry.
So it includes us too, or just not a
Yeah.
exclusive town.
We don't, we don't have to formally go to you and say, can you tile TDS to let us use that channel? They've already
The other towns you just mentioned, they don't have Comcast is what you're saying.
They don't have Comcast at all. They only have TDS. And we're on in half the community here or whatever part of the franchise.
So is there a particular format for pursuing this franchise agreement that goes through Comcast?
I, it's just a letter. First of all, you, the select people have to
Yeah.
prove it.
Understood.
And when it does, a letter just needs to come from you to their corporate or whoever your franchise contact is and asking, you know, that that channel be available for us. Then we come in the back door and we'll work out the technological part of it.
Okay. And is there an example of a town that's using an advisory committee to help determine what they'd like to see on the channel access?
I think the best example is, is Newport.
Newport.
They have all of that in place and we've been, that's what made this so easy for me personally. Because they are a nonprofit, they're already, they're, all their bylaws are constructed in a way that, you know, they meet those nonprofit requirements. And they've been to the dance for about 20 years. So they've run into every peculiarity that could have
Yep.
to come about.
Great. Okay, well, it makes sense to me. Does someone want to make a motion? One of you?
Sure. I move that we approve the asking Comcast to allow our local access channel to be used for this purpose.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And you just need to designate that it's NCTV, not YCN.
Got it. So I'm sure Kim will be doing a draft for us and then I'm sure she'll be calling
And I'll work with her
Yeah, there you go.
to get the wording you want.
Perfect.
And thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks for coming. Okay, any public comments?
Hi, I'm Bob Bowers. I'm a resident of New London. I come to you with two concerns that I have. First, I've had the opportunity to converse with many residents on my daily walks through town and with the many friends and acquaintances I have made in town over the last almost 50 years. There is a growing sense among the people I've spoken with in New London that among our selectmen to have chosen not to listen to nor truly hear the concerns and opinions of a large segment of our population. That they have decided there is no need to consider points of view which may run counter to what they have already decided. Second, there is a concern that among our selectmen to view forthright open discussion by and with the public as a stumbling block to what they have already decided. This is exemplified in their decision to go into nonpublic session to discuss, quote, property issues in response to Chief Cobb's presentation to the selectmen of the report of the Police Station Site Review Committee. Whether or not the right to know law is being properly complied with, to have those discussions in secret is the wrong thing to do for what could be a $12 million to $15 million project. Town Administrator Kim Holquest has said it best, as noted in the minutes of the Housing Commission of July 14, 2021, when she, quote, advised them to do everything in public, close quote. She has consistently advised our committees in town that deliberations and proceedings should be fully transparent and open. The selectmen should take that admonition to heart and follow that advice. Residents should know what the selectmen are discussing about Tomed property interests and why they are discussing them. The selectmen should openly discuss the significant and important 14 additional actions that the site review committee has recommended to be taken and not bury these discussions in nonpublic sessions. Only by open, honest, transparent discussion can the selectmen reach a well informed, thoroughly considered and honest decision as to the, as on this very important issue. To paraphrase a thought represented by Representative Linda Tanner referencing the recent school board votes in Croydon, quote, "Political discussion should represent the consent of the governed, not the power of the few," close quote. When it takes only two selectmen to make decisions, they should, by virtue of that power, heed Representative Tanner's admonition. The selectmen should pursue municipal decisions representing all the residents rather than the political decisions favored by the few. And I will, as I have in the past, give this to you so that you can be sure of a accurate and complete record.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for your opinion. Any comment? Okay, let's go on to old business establishment of a Whipple Hall project panel. Yes, John? We are. But yes, yes, John?
All right. I, hello. I, I think we should all try and remain calm, of course, and I'm not used to public speaking. I'm not very good at it, but I'm getting better. But I concur with Mr. Bowers and comments and analysis, really. And I just have a few comments for everybody from the town that have written down here. I grew up in in West Coast County. That's a wealthier area, but and I, we all know how towns were like back in the 50s, but things have changed in town and maybe not for the better. Like, when I first got here in 96, we had the, 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 the school, the middle school was still there. And when the kids got out and flushed out, like a hard pumping blood at 2:30 PM, whatever, their kids into the town. And that was sort of fun and attractive. But that doesn't happen anymore. What we have now is sort of an empty skeleton in town. This land right here, it's not doing all that much. And and maybe really something could and should be done more with it. And and when I grew up, where I grew up, we, we had in town tennis courts, public tennis courts, paddle courts. That might be nice for New London to something like that, especially for the elderly. They, they love to play. Ladies love to play paddle. And we should take that into account, long term actions and considerations, especially when viewing land, you know? Okay, okay, that was a preparatory comment. I have a comment about a specific land purchase. I believe that the, the house next to the present police station, the Buick-Ripple complex on Seaman's Lane, the one directly abutting it, and sharing a driveway with it should be bought immediately. That should have been done years ago. And even if the, whether the police stay in that building or not, that property really should be bought for town, for town interests. It's it has such an intimate relationship with Buick, Whipple Hall. And really, I think that for the benefit of the town, it should be bought. Just moving on now, I am, I am aware that the, the, the old buildings facilities committee has been disbanded. A new one has been formed with Ms. Cobb sitting on it and chairing it. She's the police chief. And there have been told there's another policeman actually on the committee. I, I think that we want an objective and fair balanced evaluation of these issues, problems of the police station, which is going to be a huge expense, as Bob has said, said. And therefore, we should not, yeah, yeah, it is true. We should care for the police and their perspectives and that they want and deserve a good future station. That's true. But they shouldn't be running the process. It, it I submit that having a policeman as a head of committee and which is the police chief herself represents a conflict of interest and it's not the wisest course of action. Going excuse me. And going back to the Buildings Facilities Committee, they were, and I've been told, they were nearing the end of the process of analysis. They had got it down to about for the, in regards to the police station site. They got it down. I was told there were about three possibilities. They were narrowing it down. And I think it would have been correct as, as well as, if you would respectful, that to allow the committee to finish their job, maybe say, hurry up a little bit, please, to finish their job and get their opinions and summary. They were close to finishing. You might as well let them finish their work. They, they are good and intelligent people. And I believe that the committee should have been allowed to finish. You can still allow them to finish. You, what you could do with all respect and in conclusion, what you could do is allow them in some respect reform as a second committee. Why not? There's no rule having two committees examining one issue. You, you could have the committee with Ms. Cobb continue, which would be really, as I think we can all admit, the police station's opinion about what should happen with a police. Then you can have a reform committee with Mr. Bowers or Colin heading it. And and which would be more so the public's opinion. So you'd have two committees examining one issue. And then after a year or so, you'd have two submissions and then the town could decide amongst them. I think that might be at this point, I think that might be the best course of action. Those are my, those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments. I think it might be helpful if you had an opportunity to review both the minutes and even the taped Zoom meetings. We did have a presentation from the subcommittee that was looking at location sites, potential location sites for the police station a number of meetings ago. They made the recommendations. That's a subcommittee. Their work was solely to focus on proposing potential locations. And so that work has concluded. There were a number of people from the Building and Facilities Committee that participated on that. With regards to things not happening here, it's unusual that we don't have a lot of activity going on behind us in terms of lacrosse and other sports and activities. But you might also want to look at what's going on. might also want to look at what's going on with the outing club and the tennis courts and pickleball courts that they do have down at the outing club activity. So I'm just suggesting that.
All right, all right, yeah, well, what about the point, my point, Mrs. Cobb as police chief, sharing it as being a conflict of interest?
Well, we don't agree, and she actually was selected by the subcommittee that was made up of a number of members also from the Building and Facilities Committee, so. But thank you for your comment, and we're going to move on at this point. So on to old business, the establishment of a Whipple Hall project panel. We had Colin there, and Rip was there, Phil Sherman, Bob Harrington, Kim, myself. Colin or Rip, do you want to make a comment on any of it? I will say that part of the meeting, we strongly recommend that the, this group be entitled the Whipple Hall 2022 Project Committee. Feeling that that kind of signifies what we're doing. There was a lengthy discussion about both the design phase and the construction phase that will need to take place with regards to Whipple Hall, and certainly the recommendation that we will need to consider with regards to a pre-construction contract manager in order to get all of the scope. There will be a meeting with Frank to narrow the scope with regards to looking at whether or not AC is feasible, and to address the furniture issue with his staff person, Amanda is looking at, who has a background in interior design. So certainly more, more to come on that, but if anyone has a comment, who was there, feel free, or Kim? If not, any questions? Okay. Under new business, we had an email. I don't believe the person is here. Kim, do you want to make a comment relative to this Wilmont resident with regards to New London's beach use policy?
Yes. We got a, Putnam Kidder, the director, got an email from a person who says she is a Wilmont resident. She did not sign it, so I can't exactly say who it is. The email address has a name, but, as we know, it could be anybody's name. So this person disagrees with New London's ordinance that was adopted in 2009, that says that the beaches, both Elkins and Buckland, are for the residents of New London, property owners of New London, and their guests. So this person is basically saying she disagrees that she has the right to go to the town beaches, to use the water, et cetera. I did invite her, again, I'm assuming it's a woman, into this meeting, telling her that it would be on the agenda, but if she's not here, then I guess she decided not to come.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Next, we have establishment of the solid waste reduction panel. Bill, do you want to take this?
Sure, I'll get started. I'll get started, but I think we've got several parts tonight. So before I get started, let's have an example of what recycling might look like. So I think Jerry Coogan from the Rotary wants to talk to us about Rotary's work in solid waste reduction.
So I, I didn't know I was going to be first up, but that's okay.
You, you have the show and tell, Jerry, so.
So Rotary adopted the environment as a priority for this year, and our chairman, Judy Schoen, became aware of a NextTrek's challenge, where if you were able to recycle 500 pounds of number two and number four plastic, you would beget a park bench. So we started this in December, and then we kept on going all the way up to June, and we got a park bench. And the kind of material, you know, if you got a paper, you know, you could put the paper in there, you know, something from your sandwich, loaf of bread, whatever. This is all number two. This is all number two. If you go to Clark's and get a bag of topsoil, you can put that in. If you go to the cleaners and get your cleaning done, put this in, and bring the hanger back to Jeff, he likes to get the hangers back. And then, you know, stuff like this, garbage, you know, if you, if you, if you get the muffins, English muffins, take the wrapper off and do it. Put it in there. So for the last six months, we've been going, the Rotary has been going to the two bins at the recycling center, and also the bin at Colonial Pharmacy, and after six months of this, we collected more than 500 pounds of recycled material. And as a result, through NextTrek, we got this bench right here. And this came the other day, and we have to find a suitable place for it here in town, and we will find a suitable place for it within cooperation with the selectmen. This is, this is our bag, okay? We get about, I'd say, five or six of these a week. This is a five-pound bag. So 100 of these would get us a bench, but this could accommodate 16 pounds, so this is just a portion. Here's another example. You know, just rip this off and you can put it right in there. So what we found out is our effort has been, has resulted in the overwhelming response from the town, and we are very pleased at the response of the town, because this has saved about 1,000 pounds of material that would have gone into landfill. So we feel we've saved the town some money, we've helped the environment, and we want to work with the solid waste panel to find a long-term solution to how to deal with this type of plastic, number two and number three. So we want to be a part of this process. We want to thank the selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, this board and the previous board have been very helpful and supportive. Bob Harrington's been very helpful, Kenny at the Transfer Center's been very helpful, and Kim have all been supportive. So we see this as a win-win proposition. I also want to acknowledge that we have Representative Tom Shamberg. Stand up, Tom. Tom is a state rep, just like Karen, he represents the town of Wilmont and the town of Sutton. He's also a member of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Sutton, Wilmont, excuse me. And he is also interested in this, and we'd like to maybe be able to spread this to other towns and maybe get other towns involved in it. So we're very pleased to be able to do this, and we want, we're going to sign up for another six months to do it, and want to work with the solid waste panel. So I guess we're getting a rainstorm right now.
Jerry, I know this was a very interesting presentation at the Citizens Advisory, but could you just remind people here, but, so that it's also on the record, where the drop-off points are for the plastic?
Okay. We have two drop-off places. One is at the Transfer Center. When you go there, it's all the way to the left, right next to where the plastic bottles are, plastic containers, then we have one at Colonial Pharmacy, so.
Great, thanks, Jerry.
And then, so we signed up for another six months to do this, and we're very pleased and very helpful. I also want to mention that Howard Hoak from Echo Computer, Echo Shopper, has been very helpful, because he gets about, I don't know, 35 pounds a month, and we go and see him and pick that up.
Yep. I think Liz Miller has a question in the back.
Okay, the, the key operator is NextTrek. NextTrek is a manufacturer, and they produce outdoor furniture, decking, and all kinds of material from recycled plastic. So they want to get more supply, so we are able to bring it to Hanaford. Hanaford acts as their middleman. They, they are the receptacle for the plastic, and then they bring it to a facility in Maine that actually turns it into the material. And, and Hanaford started that effort before we got involved with our NextTrek's challenge.
Yeah. So Hanaford and Marjorie House are also quite interesting. All of them, the 130, the 140, so about a year ago. So, not counting, but all the contracts, and now I collect a whole bunch, and I take to a big event all the time. Yeah, so if nonprofits do it, or companies, they can collect it, still goes to the same place, they make compost and furniture and decking. So a lot of people use, and it's in Canada, and so Hanaford has a truck, company truck, that comes through to Hanaford and collects.
Thanks, Joy. Okay, thanks, Jerry. Bill, you want to move from there?
Yeah, thank you, Jerry. That's a great introduction, because we've had a lot of things going on in the last several months that have sort of made this moment of forming a solid waste reduction panel, or I think I, I agree with you, Nancy, that perhaps maybe a committee might be better than the word panel for, for these, these groups. So we started with the, the master plan and a couple of pages of information about recycling and waste reduction. It started with the state establishing a statewide solid waste disposal reduction goal of 2021, that Representative Evil, Karen's here tonight along with you, Tom, described to us a couple of meetings ago. It's gone on with what the Rotary is, is doing here, it's gone on with what the Citizens Committee has talked about in terms of different forms of waste reduction. So I would like tonight to propose that we formally establish the Solid Waste Reduction Committee made up of up to seven citizens, and that we advertise the, this, this committee's activities in the municipal matters, and at our next meeting, actually appoint the committee. We've got several people here tonight who have expressed interest at one, one time or another, but I think it'd be advantageous to open it up widely to the community and be, as Bob Bowers says, transparent about what we're doing here. And I would suggest that from the conversations that we've had over the last several meetings, there are really three very broad goals that we talk about in municipal matters, and for the record tonight, knowing that the committee will itself establish a much more detailed work plan, and those three, three goals are, first of all, to have a plan to reduce landfill, what we dump into the landfill, that's part of the state's goals. Second of all, to have an educational program to do things like Jerry's doing here with the recyclable plastic, to let people know how we can go about doing this and why it's so important to do it. And third of all, to take on the task of looking at compostable biodiversity waste, because that's also stuff that goes into the landfill. It's a much more difficult topic, but it's one that we need to try to get our hands around. And I would further suggest that we limit the time of this committee, as suggested with these short-term committees, to March of next year, so that if there be an incentive to bring some proposals to the town meeting. Thank you.
I, I just would suggest, Bill, that if the idea is to bring proposals to the town meeting, that perhaps January or February might be the target date, so that...
Oh, sure, but I want them to still be in place so that, that they want to be active there. Oh, absolutely. We've got to get, by the time the warrant gets put together, absolutely.
Right, okay.
But rather than having it wander into next summer and so on.
Okay. So do you want to make a formal motion?
Trina, can you take what I just said and repeat it? Or my motion is to for, formally form the Solid Waste Reduction Committee with up to seven community members, residents of New London, with the three broad goals of reducing landfill deposits into the landfill, of educating the public, and of working on biodegradable compost.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any questions from the audience? Can I just ask a question to Karen? Thank you, you had attached an article that looks like it was today from, I'm not sure where, but it talked about federal funds potential. What's the reality of that grant program actually becoming available? Any ideas?
It's 100% available. I mean, it's, it's going to happen because it was part of the federal infrastructure plan, and there's going to be $55 million available per year over a five-year period, and the government is working out its, the guidelines, they're supposed to be, the federal government is working out the guidelines, they're supposed to be available at some point in September. So we don't know exactly what those, the requirements are going to be, but that money will definitely be available.
And this is from the Environmental Protection Administration?
Yeah, right. Can I make another comment?
Yes, absolutely.
So I, maybe I misunderstood, but I was hoping that maybe some of us who are here might have some input on what the panel would be looking at, and you've already adopted what they'll be looking at, so I don't...
Karen, that was just a broad overview, and I, I think I also said that I assumed the panel or committee would set its own goals and objectives in a broader sense, but I'd be delighted if people want to sort of talk about that a bit tonight also. I think that's one of the benefits of getting a group of dedicated people together, is to do that, rather than having us set the, set the bar, if you will.
Okay. Well, I had, so I just had a few comments. The first thing I just thought is that the, that the first broad recommendation, since it's about more than recycling, we should recommend, or the recommendation should be on the reduction of materials disposed in landfills through source reduction, reuse, recycling, and other means, so that it just broadens that. I also, as far, I support the second subject, the third subject. I just really felt like, instead of saying that programs should be developed to educate people on why recycling is important, that we also should really be emphasizing getting information out there on how to recycle better in town and in the region, and, you know, if we want the directions to the panel to be pretty crisp, I thought that expanding that to, to talk about how to recycle, as well as education on what to recycle, would be a really important change to the, to the, what you want this panel to do. In, in what I had sent to you, I suggested that there's a lot of information that's floating around in the municipal matters, there's some things on the website for the town, and I just thought that consolidating all of that on the website, and whether you need the panel to oversee that or not, or how you wanted to do it, I think we could do a really good job of making it sort of a go-to place for towns who are trying to figure things out. The other thing I just really wanted, I mean, I don't know how you guys want to go about it, part of the reason, I think, Bill, that you would ask people to come here tonight to talk about solid waste was to get some input, and so, you know, I reached out to Jerry, and I reached out to Joy. I know they're really, really interested in plastics, and if the panel is going to be focusing on a reduction for what's going into the landfills, maybe point them a little bit towards plastics, as well as, as composting, because it's clearly something that the town is really interested in, based on the ordinance that even passed last year, that was unenforceable, as it turned out. And the only other thing I really wanted to mention, that I would hope that the panel would look at, is improved regionalization for collection issues and transport and haulage, and I know Bob's done a lot of great stuff already, as far as glass is concerned. Anyway, those were sort of my, those... Anyway, those were sort of my, those were sort of my ideas. And I was hoping maybe we could wiggle the panel responsibilities around a little bit. I thought that's why we were here.
Great, I mean, I think all of those things fit in, but I was reluctant to, I'm not the authority that you are, or that the Joy and Liz and Maureen and so on are. So it seems to me those people who really understand the details here, and you obviously do with your work group in the state, will roll their sleeves up. The only hesitation tonight is to, and John's here too, is to not limit the people who might be interested in this to those who happen to be here tonight. But I think all of the people who are here had asked to be notified when we were going to finally discuss this. And if other people want to talk tonight, I think that would be great.
Okay, and maybe you could consider amending one of the responsibilities or something. Okay, thanks. Yeah, I actually emailed all of this earlier today.
Yeah, you did, yeah, thank you.
And Karen, I don't see the proposal that Bill gave as sort of the ultimate charter, if you will, with the group. I mean, I think Bill has said several times tonight, but I agree that we're looking to the group to really formalize that. But it was kind of high level to look at, you know, landfill reduction and the other items, education, which we've heard from all of the groups for quite a period of time.
Okay, thanks. It's just when you made the motion and then you sort of said what the panel was going to look at, that's why...
Well, it's not hard and fast.
It's broad, okay.
And we're not calling it a panel either, we're calling it a committee.
Okay, we'll call it a committee, it's an evolving thing.
There you go.
Thank you.
Just so that you have a sense of, you know, focus and going forward.
So I can make another recommendation too. My recommendation is you take the solid out of it. Just say, "waste reduction." You know, I just think semantically it's more pleasant. And secondly, I would suggest that we, well, I want to ask a question first. Is there any money to, like, run something that would be a pilot program in this? The food scrap collection?
Well, that's why I asked Karen, because my ears and eyes perked up when I read in her article that there was a potential of federal funds coming from the EPA.
No, I was thinking more along the lines of $5,000 that the town would put out. I just want to know, is that something that you can do, or?
I think that we'd need to look at that. As it is, we're going to be reviewing the budget with regards to the increases in gas and other things that are impacting our budget that we currently have and some of the projects we have going on.
Right, I was just wondering if it would be powerful, a powerful marketing technique, if you will, that if you collected rather than composting, as collecting food scraps as a baby step towards the end goal of composting, whether it be regional or in Bob's backyard, whatever, that maybe we could, one step towards that would be collecting the food scraps, which would cost money. And that there, and that would, I think, heighten interest in the whole process.
And I think certainly scoping that out and proposing that is something that we'd be looking for the committee to do, that kind of proposal.
Okay.
You know, what that would look like, what that would really cost.
Okay, thank you.
Liz, and then Colin.
Thank you, I have two questions. The first question is, how did you, what was the idea to proceed about this? Were people supposed to come together and just put our name in, say that we wanted to be on this panel? And then after that, we would meet and discuss some of these things? The other thing I wanted to say was that I've already contacted Lebanon, and they will not take any more food scraps, but Cella will if we pay them enough. And they will haul them off and compost them. So there's money involved in that. And the third thing I'd like to comment on is that Bob Harrington has already proposed a marvelous idea to change the swap shop, which we've been working on with Kim, and the dates of it. So that we, there are some really great ideas out there that you might be shocked at when we... Thank you, thank you.
There was great comments about the swap shop at the last meeting. So the intent was, several of you have already indicated clearly that you would like to be part of this. And what I was trying to suggest was that rather than just limit the people who we involve in this to those who have spoken up so far, is that a little bit of publicity, and then see if the other people that come forward also, because this should be a great community effort. So rather than just say, "Well, we're going to do it all tonight," to give us that opportunity that the three of us have agreed, this is something we want to go ahead with, and we're going to give it a little bit of opportunity for some publicity to see who else might be attracted to it. So I think we're on our way.
Colin.
I, my other thought was perhaps we want to auction off the bench to raise money. I would buy tickets.
Okay, are we, Jerry? I don't know that the bench is wide enough, but how about you and Kim? Thank you. Okay. Lynn Lewis, adoption of the credit card debit card policy.
Okay, this is the last of the policies that we haven't re-signed, re-adopted, that the auditors want us to. And this was last done about roughly 10 years ago. So we've just added some verbiage to bring it up to date. We changed the bank name to be Bar Harbor. We tightened up a few things. We took out certain items that we don't, no longer practice, such as commingled funds on every seat. You know, if you use the town card, it's only for town business. So Kim and I worked on it quite a bit. And we're just looking for you guys to adopt it.
Bill?
Just a picky little matter where some, you start by talking about debit and credit cards, then throughout most of the place, you only talk about credit cards. It seems to me you want to add the word debit in front of all these places, like, for example, under issuance of cards.
Did I miss a bunch?
Debit and credit cards and so on, all the way through? Just to be sure, clear that the whole policy reflects both debit and credit cards?
Well, that was a oversight on my part.
No, I said it's picky.
Yeah, I had intended for it to be.
That's picky, picky. The more substantive question I have in my last, maybe this, Kim, Kim, why do we use, allow the use of our debit or credit cards for meals? What's that? I don't understand that particular item on page two.
If somebody was at a training session, or if they were away on a, at a hotel or something where meals were paid by the town, they would use it for that.
So they would have, they would take the debit card to the hotel?
We would only do that potentially if the person didn't have their own credit card. Generally, we reimburse.
That's what I thought, that's...
Yes, there is a potential it could happen. But generally, people use their own credit cards and they get reimbursed.
Okay, so that's unusual.
It would be unusual, yes, but it's a potential.
Unusual to have meal receipts, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And just one last thing. Under number six purchases, we have A, and then B is missing. I don't know if you need, just want to reorder them?
I do want to reorder those.
Otherwise, I think it's fine. And thank you for doing this. I do know that the auditors have been looking for this. So...
So I move that we approve the debit and credit card policy, card use as presented?
Okay. Second. All those in favor? All those, aye, okay. Thank you, Lynn.
So I'll just reprint it with the corrections.
You got it. Okay, and budget review, speaking of money.
Okay, I have up on the screen, this is the fiscal year 2022 budget, which ends at the end of this month. So at the last couple of meetings, you've asked to kind of take a look at it. I have highlighted some things that I wanted to point out, but you may obviously ask questions of any of the items you see. So this budget is the budget that the department heads came up with back in September of 2020. And it was voted on, it was presented at a public hearing by the Budget Committee in February of 2021, and it was voted on in March of 2021. So these numbers come from a while ago. And this is one of the tough things about being on the fiscal year as opposed to the calendar year, like most other towns. The money that those towns come, you know, budgets they come up with are closer in time to actually being spent, so. But I think the Budget Committee and the department heads do a really good job of trying to forecast that far into the future. Nancy's already pointed out the issue of gas prices and oil prices. Certainly, when we were looking into these back in September of 2020, we didn't really consider what's going on in the world now. So you'll see overages in that area. So starting with page one, the executive session. I've highlighted a couple of things. You can see with the part-time clerical is over budget, but you'll also see that the wages above it is underspent. And that's when we have staff that leave. Sometimes we have part-time people who pick up the slack on that. So that's an explanation of that. We have some other overages, not, I don't think excessive ones, printing, advertising. You know, advertising, we try to watch advertising, but I often hear that people don't know that things are going on. So we do use the shopper when needed, help wanted in particular increases. The advertising budget, conferences and trainings, a little over. We've been cutting back on that year after year. So that's a little over. We had a couple of years of not spending much because of COVID. Your discretionary account is one that goes over year over year. The major things there are the MRI study that we did, that was about $5,000, and also the town's membership in the coalition communities, where the group is looking into the funding of school funding. So that kind of touches on most of those overages there. Nothing that's, I don't think, that unusual. And I'll just keep on going on unless somebody jumps in with a question, is that good? Getting into election, you see the deputy town clerk wages, and you'll also see it in the treasurer area. We had a change of staff. So the person that replaced the outgoing staff member was an existing employee and made a little bit more money than the person who was being replaced. So that explains the overage of wages there. Health and dental, again, that's a change of an employee and reflects different plans. New employee had a different plan than the outgoing. You'll see the same in finance. Computer support, you'll see that throughout, that there are overages. You recall that we went to VC3. So for this budget, we didn't have exact numbers as we do now. I think the upcoming budget, we did increase in those areas, and we should be closer to that. But you'll see overages in computer support throughout for all departments. Same thing with advertising, office supplies, over postage. These, some of these things we can't control, some we can. We try to look for different vendors for office supplies, but I think part of that is the increasing cost just overall. Legal. After many years of not spending what we appropriated, this year, we've got the two land acquisitions. The Conservation Commission's purchase of the land on Andover Road has cost several thousand dollars, and we're still not done. There was a title issue there, so that's most of the overage. We also have the sale of townland on King Hill Road. That's not as much, it's really the conservation piece that was a big problem with the title. So that's, that's the major portion of that. Yep. Both of these are related to conservation, correct? That's correct. And that money can't come from their budget? It could, you, well, their budget, they've spent their budget. You could require them to take it out of their conservation fund if you wanted. But generally, when we've done these land purchases and sales, it comes out of that line. But you could, you could tell the conservation that it has to come out of their funds. Thank you. Planning board advertising, that's completely due to how many cases they have, and that money comes from the applicant, so that's a little bit over. They had more cases than they anticipated. And Bob is here, and he can pipe up on, we've had big repairs, Town Hall, Whipple Town Hall, maintenance and repair, Academy Building Maintenance Repair. For those, mainly the generators, Bob, expenses?
It's been a lot of breakdowns of the generators. We're still waiting on parts to be put in. Getting them along with the cost.
We'll give you the mic, Bob, if you want to continue on, or is that it? Other town buildings, you remind me of that, Lynn.
I know Whipple, we had a lot of work done up there with wiring and a lot of upgrades. So that one there is a little higher than the rest.
Yeah, I'm not sure what falls under other town buildings, but they, Irish Electric was your biggest there. I think some of it was the electrical on the green for the skating rink.
Oh.
Yeah, yep.
Yes.
We're finally getting that up to code. I think we talked about that at the last meeting. And then we see some, you know, starting down with the fire station heating fuel, not too much over, but, you know, I think this is going to be something that we're going to be looking at in the next budget. Fire station sewer, so apparently they're using more water, more bathroom usage there. Lynn, can you talk about the highway garage electricity and how we're going to resolve that? It looks, it appears that it's over, but it's not really over?
Right, we received a bill from BP New London, which is part of that whole solar buyback thing. And it was split between this account and some to sewer. And it needs to just be reallocated so that it's hitting everybody a little bit more evenly, so I can, you know, reclass things for going forward for the upcoming budget, so it doesn't hit just one account.
Okay, right, the idea behind the solar was that we will go and pay the same amounts, right? So Bob, it's not, it's not all your department, so. Okay, Elkins Beach Repair and Maintenance.
Cleaning, I mean, that's, that was the biggest thing in cleaning.
For both of them, both beaches, bathrooms. Police, you see the computer support, the new cruiser, the selectmen, you decided to buy two. So that's an overage there. Emergency management, the code red is double, and that's because payments, two payments were made. So last year's payment, you'll, if you look at last year's budget, it's at zero. It was paid in July or August. So it hit one fiscal year instead of...
Got it, spurting over.
So that was when Lynn was new, and that won't happen again.
It will not.
Dispatch overtime wages, you'll see that's over while the part-time wages is under. So that's an issue of having to use overtime help instead of part-time help. Computer support, that's the same issue. Alcohol, drug and testing, drug and alcohol testing in Public Works is, sometimes it's hard to predict exactly how many tests we'll have to have, so we had more than usual, explains the overage there. Bob's Highway Equipment Repairs and Maintenance, Bob, do you want to say? There's a lot going on with your equipment and the cost to repair things and keep things longer.
We've had quite a few breakdowns, but, um, also parts have increased substantially on that. Um, we actually have another truck over there now that has a sensor that went. And unfortunately you can't get the sensor, so they've got to figure out some way to upgrade and come up with another configuration. So that's going to be a little bit more costly than it normally would be. I did hold back on paving completely, kind of looking to the future, knowing that this is what we're running into across the board. So, um, I did cut back on quite a few different line items that hopefully will cover the cost of both highway repairs and transfer, because both of them have increased substantially.
We see tires, I think this upcoming budget, you did appropriate, uh, more for tires.
Um, maintenance also, so hopefully that helps a lot.
He should be good on the bottom line, though, he's worked hard to, um, not spend in other areas. Transfer equipment repair and maintenance, was that the tractor trailer or the trailer at the transfer station?
We actually had trouble with, um, both trailers. Um, some repairs were welding due to driver errors, not from my guys, but as, um, occasionally it happens at the landfill, they'll try to push the load out that's frozen and they damage parts of the trailer, so I got to get them welded.
Great.
And there was also breakdowns with both the one-ton and the tractor that they have over there.
Special waste drives, that's when people bring their household.
Go back, is, um, you used, Bob, why are the waste disposal and trash hauling fees so low budget? Speaking of solid waste.
Repeat that, Bill.
The, um, trash hauling fee and the waste disposal line items are some $38,000 under budget. I was just wondering why that is.
Um, part of that, well, the, the hauling fees.
$48,000, actually.
Well, the hauling fees, um, we were in a transitional period, trying to come up with somebody else to do the contract hauling. So we actually did the hauling. So money come out of a different line to pay my guys to go up there, plus the cost of my fuel. And we didn't actually have a contract at that point. So there'd be a savings there. Um, also on the next budget, I believe we increased a little, not knowing what we were faced with with the upcoming contract.
Right, and it's possible that this year is not closed out, so we could have some more.
Those just, given the earlier discussion, those jumped out at me.
Yep. Okay, so special waste drives, I think I mentioned that. And everybody remember that our August 6th, um, is going to be noon to three instead of the morning. So everybody try and remember that.
We're going to collect during the parade.
Yeah. Recreation Department, the conferences and training, we have increased our training of the lifeguards, um, taking more of that on to make sure that we have enough people. Uh, and van maintenance, you recall, we had quite a bit of work done to the, to the van. Conservation is over budget, but that will be reimbursed by their fund, so they will not be over budget. Housing Commission, the selectmen agreed to allow the Housing Commission to engage a consultant to start the work of the, uh, workforce housing issue. And I'll let Lynn talk about bonded debt principle and interest and what happened there.
So if you remember, we refinanced some of our debt, um, went with the, um, the bond bank. So that happened after we had already gone to the budget hearing. So essentially, if you see the three lines that are way underspent, 43, 40 and 50,000, right, that was taken care of with the payment to the bond bank and the same thing is true of the interest for those loans.
So the balance is not underspent, though it looks like it is.
Okay, um, so question around process, um, do you go over budgets with the department heads?
Yes.
As part of, okay.
Yep, and Lynn gives their updates each month at department head meetings. Sometimes there are incorrect codings, like the department head may have put in incorrect code. So they'll look at it and say, geez, I didn't think I overspent that or whatever. And so we'll go over it, and particularly this time of year. You know, once it comes near the end of the year, they really need to make sure that everything they need to order has been ordered and it's properly coded.
And have department heads begun to make, or have thoughts and comments relative to, uh, increases in electricity and gas and oil and all of that?
They haven't been asked to start their budget yet, but they're certainly thinking about it. And some of them continually, you know, have their budget going, unless the selectmen want to change the timing. We generally have them do in September.
Well, I wasn't talking about the new budget, I was talking about the budget we're about to go into, July 1st.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, yeah, especially Bob. Bob, Bob has a lot, um, of issues with, because he's got a lot of gas.
Yeah.
A lot of diesel, uh, in particular. And so he and I have talked about potentially putting off some, um, things like paving, although the selectmen and will, you know, once we get a better handle on how much money we're talking, we may want to put off some other things. The compensation study would be one thought. There, there may be other projects we can put off until the spring as we see how things happen. Instead of, uh, you know, cutting back on paving, because obviously there's some things we can't cut back on. You know, sand and salt and, and, and those kinds of things. But, yeah, we're going to have to sit down and each department head will, um, look at their budget and especially with regard to the fuel, but also other things. I mean, we're even fixing vehicles, as Bob has already experienced, really expensive, really high costs, um, of things, so.
Getting materials.
Right.
Lynn, do you want to, um, repeat for the board and others, um, the question I asked you about revenues? How you felt we were doing there?
Yeah, nothing seems very high or very low on revenues. It's, nothing was really outstanding. Um, we did receive more, uh, meals and rooms taxed than expected, so that was a nice surprise. But nothing is really, you know, out of whack from what's been predicted.
The only, the only one I, that stood out to me was building permits. Um, I think that was under, but I think that was because we switched to the state, so we are not getting the fees for the commercial. Um, you know, when we used to issue commercial building permits, that, those fees now go to the state. So you will see reflected in the revenue estimates, because this budget was prepared prior to that being known, how much we would lose. So I think that's the reason for that.
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you, thank you Lynn for preparing this. Kim, Town Administrator Report.
Hey. Get us back here, okay. On, at the July 14th meeting, we will hold a public hearing to discuss the acceptance of $20,000 that the Conservation Commission got to go towards the walkway project at the Filbert Crescenti Bog. So we have to have a public hearing because it's over $10,000. Um, the AV should be done tomorrow and I did see the red van, thanks Bob. I did see the red van at Whipple, um, there was a part that was due in today, so it should be done. Um, so I'll update you on that. Oh, let's see. They will schedule training either next week or as soon as they get, as soon as they get it done. They hope it's going to be next week, that's all I have.
Our committee meetings and reports. Um, I attended the, as I mentioned, the, um, Whipple Project Committee, which I already spoke about, but other, other.
Yep, um, the Planning Board met on June 14th and, uh, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee is being formed. A continued hearing on a conditional use permit for, uh, a dwelling on Bog Road. Um, there was another, um, there are a number of applications regarding stormwater and erosion control. Uh, there was a subdivision and annexation on Davis Hill. And that was it.
Okay, Bill, anything? Okay, um, approved selectmen's minutes of May 17th and the 26th. We just got the 26th today. Do people have time to look at it or do you want to forego that one?
I, I haven't read the 26th.
Okay.
So I'll move that we approve the, uh, minutes of May 17th and then particularly commend you, Trina. Great work on these, this is fantastic, thank you.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have the litany of upcoming meetings. And just a reminder that town offices are closed on Monday, July 4th. Any other business?
Yes, I move that, uh, under RSA 91 dash A, colon, three, comma, two, parentheses, D, that we go into non-public session for the, consider the buying, selling and leasing of real property. And I will note that that takes a vote of all three of us to do that.
Could I ask, Bill, that you also include, um, RSA 91A32D? Um, I'm sorry, that's not yours, the, um, an employee issue that I'd like to speak with the board about, under RSA 91A32BA.
Certainly.
Okay, I'll take a roll call, Bill?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Nancy, yes? So we're unanimous and we'll go into non-public.
You're welcome, I did that because you mentioned it, thanks for mentioning it, Nancy. I should have, I should have blown it up a little earlier, sorry about that, but I'm, I'm working on it, I'll get better. I'm trying. Yep, I appreciate the, um, suggestion.
Use what? The cable, yes. No, I agree.